Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. Often before our city council meetings, we have special presentations for issues that are important in the community. So I want to invite Jim Thayer up for this presentation of a resolution today recognizing spina bifida awareness. And I will read the resolution and then invite you to share anything that you might like to speak to. This is a resolution recognizing spina bifida awareness. Whereas spina bifida is the most common permanently disabling birth defect in the United States, more people are born with spina bifida than cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, and cystic fibrosis combined. Yet, most people are unfamiliar with this disability. And whereas spina bifida is basically an opening in the spinal cord that occurs in the first three weeks of justician, the nerves of the spine then protrude from an opening in the back. Spina bifida literally means split spine. A child born with spina bifida will need to have surgery within 48 hours of birth to close the back and protect the nerves. Nerve damage occurs during delivery, and the surgery can cause paralysis of the lower limbs, hydrocephalus, and bowel and bladder problems. Most people born with spina bifida will require a shunt to drain excess fluid from their brain. And they will also require many surgical procedures throughout their lives and see many different specialists regarding the many challenges they face. And whereas every day about eight babies born in the United States have spina bifida or similar birth defect of the brain and spine, it is estimated that there are over 166,000 people in the United States living with spina bifida. And whereas the Minnesota Spina Bifida Association began in 1973 providing education and support to new families affected by spina bifida, and whereas October is National Spina Bifida Awareness Month and is represented by a yellow ribbon, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby declare the 14th day of October 2018 to be Spina Bifida Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you so much for being here and helping us recognize and share information about this.
I want to, first off, my name is Jim Thayer. By the way, I'm on the board of Spina Bifida. And Claudia Fugley, who couldn't quite get to the doors. Oh, there she is. I didn't see her. I was looking at her. Anyway, I want to thank the mayor in Minneapolis and city council for granting this resolution. It's very difficult for a nonprofit that deals in the medical world to grow due to HIPAA laws. We can't go to people. They have to come to us. So it's things like a resolution here that really help us get out there and let people know that we exist. So again, I want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you so much for being here today. Did you want to add anything?
Again, I'd like to thank the council for helping us out. And come and see us. Come and watch our bridge lit up. Come and join us. Anybody that has questions about spina bifida, or you know someone with spina bifida that has not been involved with us, contact us. We're willing to help you out. We are a teaching resource group, and we mentor, and we do things for people with disabilities. So appreciate it. Thanks for listening to us. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth Cunningham. Good morning. Again, my name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this regular meeting in the city council for September 31st. The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum for today's meeting. Our agenda for today is before us. We have an amendment offered by councilmember Gordon to add, under the Order of Resolutions, an honorary resolution declaring September 21st to September 30th as 10 days free from violence in Minneapolis. Are there any further resolutions to amend the agenda from councilmembers? Seeing none. Oh, I'm trying to log into. Councilmember Conno.
Madam Chair, sorry. I was trying to log into speaker management, but it wouldn't let me. I just know that there's community members who would like to address the council today, and I'm wondering if we can entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow for comments so we could hear from some of the families who took the LRT, who walked here, who took public transit to share their thoughts and their views with us today.
Councilmember Conno has moved to suspend the rules of the Minneapolis City Council to allow for public testimony. That motion would need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on councilmember Conno's motion to suspend the rules? I will say I will not support the motion today. I'll be voting no. We have had significant public testimony for hours in three different committee meetings about the topic of citing shelter. And so it's the reason we have our rules is to ensure that we have time to complete all of the business of the city. I know folks may agree or disagree, but that will be why I'm voting no today. Is there any further discussion? I'm not seeing.
I.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to get clarification from councilmember Conno. Are you, do you have a particular time limit that you are looking at for this public comment period?
Thank you, councilmember Cunningham. I appreciate both council president's concerns and your question. I do think it's important to acknowledge that as a council who has focused on racial equity, that we allow the Latino community members who are here to speak because they very rarely ever get to come here to speak to us, I think I would be happy and comfortable limiting the time period to 20 minutes. It would give, you know, maybe a couple of speakers, two minutes each to address the council. And if there's, you know, not enough people for 20 minutes, that's fine, then we can, you know, continue our conversation or business shortly thereafter.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Do want to also note, I'll put myself in queue here, that typically, I mean, as councilmembers, we absolutely can make motions about any item on our city council meeting, including delaying items that may need public hearings that would be noticed, sending things back to committees for further discussion, voting against things. And so we would make assumptions about how people stand on any particular issue that people are here to talk about based on the idea of whether or not to have public hearings at our council meetings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
No.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
President Bender.
Nay.
There are eight ayes and five nays. The motion fails.
The motion.
Madam President, a motion to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds vote. Nine would be required to suspend the rules. The motion fails.
All right. That motion has failed. I do want to thank folks who came today, and as I said, we are likely going to be talking about this issue for a long time, and any councilmember can make a motion to set a future public hearing about this issue. That brings us back to a vote on our agenda. Are there any further amendments proposed to the agenda?
Any.
I don't see any, so that I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to approve our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Somo.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and our agenda is adopted as amended by councilmember Gordon's motion. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of August 31st for acceptance. I'll recognize the vice president for that motion.
Somo.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. I'll recognize the vice president for the motion to make those referrals.
Somo.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is the reports of our standing committee. The first report is from our Committee of the Whole presented by council vice president Jenkins.
Madam President, I'm in queue.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Conno.
I just wanted to clarify for the audience. I'm very sensitive to the fact that a lot of these community folks oftentimes don't get the chance to be here, so I just wanted to explain that what happened up here at the front, and I'll do it in Spanish. Acabamos de votar para que no los dejaran hablar. Entonces, si quieren se pueden quedar para la sección donde vamos a debatir y hablar del proyecto. So what I just said is that we took a vote, and we decided not to allow the community to speak. And if they wanted to stay for the part of the discussion where we will be engaging on the issue of this homelessness encampment, that they could stay and do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And I just want to note, I did, I was hoping that Mayor Frye would be able to join us for this item. He hadn't planned to attend our council meeting this morning, so I know he did need to arrange his schedule to be able to be here, so I'm going to just check in and see if that is still possible. And then I'll recognize the council vice president for the Committee of the Whole report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings forward one item today, which is a staff direction regarding the tent encampment on Hiawatha, which directs staff to begin preparations for a navigation center at 2600 Minnehaha. I move to approve this item.
Council vice president has moved the item. Councilmember Ellison.
I'm sure that my colleagues will have more to discuss on this item, but after giving a significant amount of thought last night, as I'm sure a lot of us have, I feel that the options that we're given, with all due respect to staff, and I think that staff has bent over backwards to figure out a solution to this issue, but I just think that there, I think there are better options available to us. I started to cite, site aside, right, it felt like yesterday we're being asked if we should put people who are some of our most vulnerable population into these FEMA-style trailers here or FEMA-style trailers there. And I just feel like there are probably more dignified options that we could explore in order to place people who are experiencing homelessness at the encampment. I would love to hear what sort of my colleagues have to, what else my colleagues have to say about the issue, but I would typically not be in favor of delaying this at all, but I think that through some conversations that I've been having with folks since last night, I think that there are more options available to us to explore. I would love for us to table this issue and to not adjourn the meeting and to re-adjourn, I don't have the date for next Friday in front of me, but to re-adjourn next Friday so that we're not waiting a full two weeks to make a decision, but giving, to give us a week to explore better options, I think, more dignified options for the encampment. And so I'll let my colleagues speak before making a more formal motion, but I just wanted to vocalize that. A couple of things that I'll say about the options available to us. When I start to really explore what it would entail to put, you know, 53 people per trailer in some of these 3,000-square-foot trailers, I think somebody had mentioned to me, there would be about enough room for a bed, and then for a person to stand next to that bed. And I think that, you know, for some of the conversations I've been having, I've been using the analogy of like, we all grew up watching The Real World, right, in the 90s, where you put, you know, 10 white people in a condo for a summer, and they all freak out on each other, right? And so I think that for us to put folks who are experiencing anything from a high level of stress, right, due to maybe a recent eviction or something like that, to, all the way to chemical addiction and mental health, or both, I think is, I think is a recipe for a lot of heartache and for, and for really, and ultimately, I think that we can, we can do better than that for the encampment. And I really want to give us just, you know, again, I understand the urgency. I don't want to delay this vote, but I feel like the options in front of us are not options, and that we owe it to both the encampment and to the people of the city to explore more viable options, more dignified housing options for the folks experiencing homelessness at the encampment and beyond the encampment.
Thank you. So councilmember Ellison is making what I would take as a substitute motion to delay this item to a special council meeting. I think I do see a number of councilmembers in queue. I might ask our staff either now or as we go along here to suggest some options for us about how we might make that decision, whether it is a specially convened council meeting, or perhaps we could, perhaps there are other options about how we could make that decision within a timeframe. We could potentially empower our staff to come back to another committee or something like that. So that's just a question to, I suppose, clerk. Thank you. And then I see councilmember Conno. So now we have a separate column, just for my colleagues, on the Ellison motion to delay, and councilmember Conno is in queue.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate councilmember Jeremiah Ellison's engagement with his issue throughout last night and this morning, and I think there's been many of us who have been grappling with what to do because yesterday's decision didn't feel right. We know that wasn't the right decision, and we know that the options that we have are not optimal. And so I'm glad to hear that there's flexibility in thinking about different ways that we could approach this issue. And part of it is that we are holding ourselves to a very high standard of making decisions on this now quickly because it's a moment of need. But I do concur with councilmember Ellison when we chatted this morning that it's better to make the right decision than the rushed decision. So I'm understanding now that this is a motion, although I had heard councilmember Ellison say that he probably wanted a little bit more discussion. So what I want to do is propose an amendment to the motion, and it's just about timing. So next week is a special week for me, and so I was planning to not be here on the 28th. So I'm wondering if we would consider reconvening at HPD. So HPD is meeting on the 26th already, and I don't know if the rest of us can also reconvene there or allow HPD to kind of take the first stab at making that decision at that committee then, and then bring it forward to the, to the next committee that follows. And lastly, I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate what this has done for us in terms of engaging diverse communities throughout the city in this very issue that impacts them disproportionately. And I want to acknowledge the fact that the Latino community that is here today and the testimonies we've heard from teachers, administrators, families, and parents is really valuable. However, I don't want that to be the only interface that City Hall and government has with you. I would love to have our mayor, our sitting councilmember for that ward, to come visit, to learn from you, to meet your families, to meet your students, and to have, and to have a real community development conversation with a racial equity analysis, which many of us are passionate about, and that's why we've been working on things like cultural corridors and the comp plan, to make sure that we're helping your school grow and succeed and get the playground that your children want, and get these other amenities that the city-owned lot right next to it could probably give you really easily. And you have a really awesome councilmember who's super progressive and can really work on these issues with you. So I think, I want this to be an invitation to do more work with you in a better way, in a more respectful way, in a way that takes it into acknowledgement, your experiences, the value you bring to the city. Without the Latino community, Lake Street would be shut down. Without the Latino community, we wouldn't have some of the schools we have in this city. So thank you for being here. And the next time, the next time we meet, we want to go to your school to have us show you your classrooms, your teachers, your drawings, and tell us what you're working on. So muchas gracias por estar aquí. Es un gran honor, y esperamos verlos otra vez. Vamos a seguir debatiendo el tema, pero no es la única y la última vez que vamos a hablar con ustedes. Vamos a seguir luchando con ustedes para asegurarnos que la escuela tenga los recursos y las inversiones que necesitan de parte de la ciudad. And also, our mayor speaks a little bit Spanish, so I'm hoping he says something to you, too. So I did make a motion to amend.
And the motion was?
To HPD on the 26th instead of on the 28th.
Councilmember Ellison, I'll recognize to speak, and then I know Mayor Frye would like to also speak.
And I just wanted to clarify, get some clarification from the clerk. We'd be reconvening the full council, overlapping HPD. Can we, can we do that? Does time permit that? Yeah, so.
Madam President, councilmember Ellison, I understood the original intent was to adjourn this meeting of the full council to another date or time, which you had proposed of next Friday, the 28th.
Yes.
The amendment I understood proposed by councilmember Conno was to continue that same intent.
Okay.
And that this council would then meet either before or immediately thereafter of the regularly scheduled HPD committee meeting. You couldn't override the HPD committee.
Right. And so, and we wouldn't be kicking this to the HPD committee.
Correct. It would be an adjourned meeting of this body.
Okay, awesome. Then, yeah, I would, I would support that.
And we, Mr. Clerk could remind us, too, of those details from the staff direction, how I suppose the staff direction would then not be adopted today if we're delaying it.
Correct.
We had intended for this item to go to HPD as an agenda item, anyway.
Right. And Madam President, as you know, on the HPD committee report today, there are a number of other staff directives that came through in this cycle. One of those came through as quickly as yesterday's Committee of the Whole meeting. So we have yesterday's Committee of the Whole meeting recommendation, as well as all of the original staff directives that were forwarded by the Housing Policy and Development Committee in this same cycle. What this would do is when HPD brings its report forward, those would be ready to be approved today. This particular directive then would carry forward, if the motion currently before you is approved, to an adjourned meeting of the city council, timed to follow the next HPD's committee meeting in the next cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I just want to note for my colleagues now, who do want to speak, we are now technically discussing councilmember Conno's motion, which was to amend councilmember Ellison's motion. I want to recognize Mayor Frye to speak. I imagine before, so just to, we will need to vote on these amendments. However, I just want to give everyone a chance to check their schedules and make sure that councilmembers are available for that date before I call that vote. Mr. Mayor.
Council president, if you would prefer, you can vote first on councilmember Conno's motion or amendment, but I'd like to speak prior to the underlying motion.
I think, I think it will actually give us a chance to check the calendars and do those sort of logistical things, so I'm happy to.
I'm happy to help in that respect. Thank you, council president. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to speak here today at your committee. I want to first acknowledge the historic trauma and racism that the Native community has experienced over hundreds of years. That trauma, that difficulty, that racism has ultimately resulted in a lot of the present day situations that we are dealing with. And while our situation is not unique, encampments have sprung up all around the country, and no city has done it perfectly. But we, over the last month and a half, have been doing our very best, and we are trying to attack the issue with a new approach. Previously, in our city, the homeless population, those experiencing homelessness, have been treated as if they were invisible. They've been pushed to the side, not treated like the true members of our community, our family members, our friends that they are. We are shifting that right now. Our approach is centered on compassion and a respect for the dignity of all human life. And that dignity does include those who are experiencing homelessness. Perhaps it is a new approach, but it has been one that is long overdue. And so in this approach, we have to recognize several things, and that we've divided our plan into three different phases. The first is harm reduction, making sure that the necessary social services and safety are in place. We've added hand sanitizing stations, showers that are nearby. We've made sure that there are porta-potties in the area, and in terms of safety, there is a very consistent law enforcement presence, in addition to both lighting as well as cameras. These were pieces that were asked by the community, asked for by the community, specifically the American Indian community. And in pushing this approach, we've made sure that the American Indian community was at the center of these decisions, and these decisions were supported by them. The second phase is moving towards both addiction treatment, as well as the navigation center that you are discussing today. And all of this goes with a light towards the long-term plan of stable housing. We need to be focusing on stable housing. Housing is a right, and sadly, it is not afforded to everyone. The underlying motion right now is for a delay. I do not support a delay. People are hurting right now at this encampment. Families are in need. There are several safety predicaments that we can account for, that we need to account for, both in terms of women who are being victimized, as well as drug addiction. Yesterday alone, there were three overdoses at the camp. I do not believe that delaying is the right option. However, I do agree full-heartedly that there is no solution right now on the table that is perfect. I am not certain that we will find a perfect solution out there. I am not certain that we will find a perfect solution out there. And so, over the coming weeks, what I would recommend is the selection of a site, and I do not support Roof Depot. I support the selection of a site so that we can move forward to make sure that people have the necessary shelter and safety, and to make sure that the city is not sitting on its hands in the interim. Now, simultaneously, if a better option becomes available, by all means, we can move very quickly and rapidly down that road. I've heard several options that have been put forward. None of them have been shown to work yet. One of those options is for school. That option has neither been approved by the community nor the school board, and according to the superintendent, that option would take many, many months just to start the process. And so I strongly encourage us to act. We have a crisis of homelessness right now, and it is not a crisis that we can delay on acting. And I very much look forward to working with members of the council. I very much look forward to working with our Native community. I very much look forward to working with all of you. This is a difficult issue with no perfect solutions, but it is a time when I think collectively we do need to lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Gordon.
Well, I just wanted to comment briefly on the amendment before us. I really appreciate the mayor's comments, and I agree with some of that and can speak to that. I think the part that I feel most important to keep in mind is that we don't have a lot of time if we actually want to find an alternative, warm, safe, healthy space for these folks. But with that said, the committee meeting on the 26th looks pretty light. Looks like there'd be plenty of room that we could end the committee meeting, so we could wrap it up and have a full council meeting. I have some doubts that this small amount of time's going to result in us finding a much better site. I also have concerns that accommodations that, and I can talk more about this later, but councilmember Ellison was critiquing the situation with beds in the bathroom and the trailers that are 3,000 square, and I just want to note that that's a lot better accommodations than most of our shelters, many that have mats on the floor, and people are packed. I also have concerns that accommodations that, and I can talk more about this later, but Councilmember Ellison was critiquing the situation with beds and the bathroom and the trailers that are 3,000 square. And I just want to note that that's a lot better accommodations than most of our shelters, many that have mats on the floor, and people are packed in there. So, and I don't know if we're going to get to motel situations, single rooms, efficiencies, or whatever we're thinking of. I think that's a stretch. But I also really recognize the concerns about the two sites that we're before us now, and obviously, the council is divided in it. So if a delay might get us to unanimous consent on a better site, and it's the will of the majority here to put this off until next week, certainly, the committee can accommodate the time, and we can make sure that our meeting's over in time so that we can all convene to meet there.
Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Conno's amendment on the timeline? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add one additional piece, which is that staff have been working vigorously to find a site for the last several weeks. Most of the sites that have been brought forward do not work for several different reasons. So I just want to state that the notion that we'll suddenly find a perfect site within the next week or week and a half is unlikely. And I strongly encourage us to move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
I would say that, you know, and maybe I'm out of the loop on some of the conversations, but I think that for most of my colleagues, we were given a day to make this decision, and we were presented with those options, and we were given a day to decide between 2,600 Mini-HAHA and the Roof Depot site. Many of the details were pretty unsavory for us to have to digest and make a decision on. We were given a day. I think that, you know, while nobody is sort of like advocating for magic, I do think that this amount of time is literally more than a day, and I'll just kind of leave my comments at that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I put myself in queue. So I'm happy to support Councilmember Conno's amendment. I do see a number of colleagues that are still wishing to speak on the underlying motion. So I'll just note that and let people decide if they still want to speak or not. And then I will go ahead and ask the clerk to please call the roll on Councilmember Conno's amendment.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that has been amended. So that brings us back to Councilmember Ellison's original motion as amended by Councilmember Conno's amendment. So that would be, perhaps I could just ask the clerk to restate the motion that we have now before us.
Madam President, the motion before you is to continue the consideration of proposed establishment of the Navigation Center on City-Owned Property to an adjourned meeting to be scheduled immediately after the Housing Policy and Development Committee at 2:30 PM on Wednesday, September 26, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I do want to note and maybe ask again the city clerk staff or others to weigh in. We've started to get in the habit of opening our meetings to public testimony for hearings that have not been publicly noticed, and I am growing concerned about that. It really violates a lot of our rules that are ceded in a value of making sure everyone knows what's going on and are equally invited to speak. And so I just want to note that and suggest that if we intend to hold public hearings, that we should probably notice them. So then I have Councilmember Johnson in queue next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to speak in support of the motion. I think, obviously, a delay is not ideal, but I do think it is reasonable to try to evaluate some of the operational difficulties that present themselves with really these two imperfect sites that both have problems. And, you know, with Roof Depot, I have operational concerns that I still don't have all the answers to, and I'm hoping in the next few days that we're able to get those answers so that we can have even more details out there. And just to set expectations for everyone, it still may end up being 2,600 Mini-HAHA Avenue, but at least there will be more information. At least there will be more opportunities to try to identify other sites and think outside the box as well. I also want to acknowledge or mention that, you know, Roof Depot in general, I stood with the community and voted against using it as a water yard site, and I have an interest in revisiting that. We've got a new council here as well, and I just wanted to name that because I think that, you know, this is a community that has had space taken up and where there are systemic racial injustices. And we have an opportunity to correct some of that history or make up for it by going above and beyond and actually empowering the community and giving as much space as we can in an ideal location in order to fulfill the community's vision. So I do support this motion today, and I do appreciate everyone who's here. I know we don't have the public hearing, but we see you, and we hear you, and we are listening. We're trying to, in this really imperfect situation, figure out how we can make it better. And I do think delay by about a week here in total, or even a little less than that, to make sure we've overturned every rock and to try to find every way possible to make this situation as good as possible is important. So thank you for all being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm really supportive of this motion, and I think it's worth noting, yesterday really didn't feel good for any of us, not up here, not out there. And the last many, many weeks have not felt good, as we've watched this crisis become more visible, as we've watched the conditions that people are living in. And the choice that we were debating yesterday, that we were told was absolutely urgent, that had to be decided yesterday by, and we were told that by staff, we were told that by Councilmember Conno, that was the framing of the conversation we were having, was that we had to decide on a site to put these trailers. And we're looking at it and saying, this is housing that is not going to feel good. This is housing that is going to feel good in relationship to sleeping outside by a highway, right? It is better. It is warmer. It is cleaner. It is safer. And it is not good housing, and we're going to spend $2.5 million on it. And that was a hard thing to swallow, to say, we're going to spend this much money for something that really feels inadequate to the situation. The only thing that felt worse than that was to spend $10 million to have to buy back the Roof Depot site. And so if we're talking about housing that doesn't work, that was the choice we were sort of posed with yesterday. I really appreciate, as we've thought about it, I was sort of thinking, this doesn't feel like a fair choice. This doesn't feel like the choice we should be making. I appreciate Councilmember Ellison sort of putting that into words and saying, maybe there's another option, and we should at least pull on that thread and see, is there something better? Is there a building? If we're going to spend $2.5 million, is there something that we could do quick renovations to, to get people actually inside, to get people into a space where there is some sort of common area, to get people into a space where they don't have to walk outside to go to the showers? I don't know if it's possible. Five days is a really short period of time to look for something like that, and I know we've at least explored a few things that seemed like they didn't work out. But I think if we're weighing the option of, this is going to take up to 60 days to implement, once we say, yes, let's go, this is the site, we're now making it 65 days. We can't predict what the weather's going to do. This might be something that we regret a little bit. There's some risk here in this, in the delay. But I think it's worth doing to try to pull on these threads. So I really appreciate the energy everybody's putting into this. I really appreciate the sense of urgency, and I'm going to support giving us a few days to look for something better.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I also appreciate the work that folks are putting into this, both here and in the community. I'll definitely be supporting this delay, and it would probably also give enough time where I'll try to make sure that, find some time that might work for the, to engage the community a little bit better, whether that's a more broad-based community meeting out there and maybe at Matthews Park or somewhere. But I think it'll give an opportunity to do that also, just so we can get more feedback, and I'll certainly make sure to visit the encampment as well. I think one of the things that we're going to, I think that the council's trying to also maybe tell staff is that that issue of city-owned property that was such a big priority maybe has to be looked at twice. Maybe there's some place that can be leased or rented that's already vacant. It's going to be tough also because I believe that we got pretty clear messages from a lot of the residents of the camp that they need, want something close by, something that's in the familiar area, near the services. So I recognize it's also going to be very tough, and I'm not sure what we're going to come up with in this short amount of time, but I think this gives us an opportunity, and it's definitely more than one day.
Thank you. I have myself here in queue next. I want to make a couple of comments. The first is that I did make the motion yesterday at the meeting to support this address. I did that because I was given the impression that the city needed to select a site this week in order to stay on a timeline to get a temporary Navigation Center up and running within any reasonable timeframe related to the cold weather that is coming. And I was also told by staff that we don't have other sites to consider that are nearby. So that just kind of keeps bringing us back to, we have this site, we have the Roof Depot site, we can ask the county to please continue to help us try to find a site that the county owns. We can approach private landowners or nonprofit partners and ask if they have any land that they can please donate or help us purchase or something. So these are the things that staff has been doing. I don't think they will probably have a lot of new options for us in this timeline. I just think that that's just an honest expectation to set. But I also agree that this is not how we normally do things. And on the one hand, I'm glad that we are all stepping up together to address an urgency, to have a sense of urgency, to address a longstanding series of problems in a community, and that is important. And the deadlines that we have been setting for ourselves have kept us feeling that urgency. On the other hand, any decision like this, making a decision on the timeline hasn't given any council member any chance to engage with their constituents, with community, to involve people in the decisions that we are making, and that is not normally how we do business, and there are lots of reasons for that. So I'm supporting the motion to delay this, knowing that it is delaying our final solution. And I also just want to say, I know I sound like a broken record. I've gotten a list of funding sources from our finance department that could be potentially used to fund purchase of land, rental or purchase of trailers, rental or purchase of cots, lighting, electricity, water, and all of the other things that are going to be needed. And I mean, I would encourage my colleagues to dig into this piece because we have not committed any funding as the city. We have no commitment of funding from the county or the state. There are conversations happening, and the state and the county have been extremely important partners, and we hope that they will be able to find funding money. We are assuming that we will, but the funding sources that are available the most readily are those that are allocated for affordable housing uses. We could use the development fund that is intended for redevelopment at Upper Harbor Terminal and other locations around the city. Going beyond that list of funding sources, I think, would require the council to make decisions about trade-offs. And again, just want to encourage my colleagues to really dig into that. You may have a creative idea about places to find funding, but sooner than later here, we are going to be able, we are going to need to make those difficult decisions, each of which have trade-offs, too. So this does give us a little bit more time. I wish we were starting from, we have $5 million, and how should we best spend it? Not, we have the solution, we don't know how much it's going to cost, we don't know where we're going to put it. It just feels backwards a bit to me, too, but I know that staff at all of these levels of government are working very fiercely and very collaboratively to try to do something new and urgent here. So here we are. But so this will delay us just a bit here. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I don't know if I can add anything novel to what has already been stated. I am supportive of Councilmember Ellison's motion to delay. We have certainly been faced with an untenable choice of worse and more worse. And it's pitting communities against each other, which I think is completely an untenable place to be as well. And I think we need to really name what the real, at least in my mind, culprit is in this situation. And, you know, I had an opportunity to sit the other day with one of the true social justice activists of our era, Angela Davis. And the professor was asked a question, what is the number-one issue that is facing our society? And some people thought it might be racism. Some people thought it might be sexism. And I think all of those issues are very challenging. But she said the number-one issue is capitalism. And capitalism is what has stagnated wages, what has inflated all of the cost of living in our culture and society. And we need to call these issues out whenever they are present. And the deep colonialism, the deep history of slavery that we have never, ever fully addressed as a nation is present right here and now in front of us today and visible, made visible by this encampment that is here in Minneapolis and in almost every city in America. These are very difficult issues, and if we are going to be a society, we need everybody to be engaged and involved in helping to deal with these issues. And so we can't leave out the main culprits. And I just wanted to state what may be the obvious, but we need to take that all into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment. As a council member, I take my responsibility to be fiscally responsible very, very seriously. I will say that my analysis, though, when it comes to cost, is not just in dollars and cents. Something we haven't talked about here is the cost of trauma. And as somebody who has worked with kids, I also don't want to sound like a broken record, but as somebody who has worked with kids, I have very sincere concerns about this location. There were three people, apparently, who overdosed yesterday. That is traumatic for the children at the site, who are a part of the encampment, as well as now we're potentially going to be traumatizing more children by exposing that to that as well. That's. And again, as I mentioned yesterday, it's like we're being really set up into this either-or. And I get that we're rushed, but one of the challenges that we face is fastest is not always best. And I believe that we are in territory in which other cities have not got it right. And we have the opportunity to learn from the lessons, be able to be more thorough in our analysis. And I just, you know, and I know city staff have worked so hard on this, and I hold so much gratitude, and I ask for city staff to, how can we as council be of support to that? How can we be able to find, if we got to be able to reach out to folks, build partnerships, be in conversations? I'm available as a council member to be of support. I don't necessarily think that Roof Depot is the best space. Like, I'm not advocating for that because I think that it also has a lot of challenges and is not a perfect location, and I know that we won't find one. But I have to, I feel as a person of color who was elected to office, that it is my responsibility to protect our children from further trauma because we live in a traumatizing society for children of color already. And so I feel it is my responsibility to help be that voice I, I would just like, I would just like to urge my colleagues in this upcoming few days that we have, I do support this delay, for my colleagues to please consider taking this address off of the options, the 2600. I understand it from a very logical dollars and cents and, you know, the limited options that we have. I understand that. But this is truly not a viable option when we think about the long-term consequences of, of putting two vulnerable communities next to each other. And so I just want to ask that of my colleagues, and also to city staff, to please lean into us as policymakers and as partners out in the community, how we can be able to bring more resources to the table and be of support to city staff. I also want to take a quick moment to say that we are in a new time of political change and political participation. One of the challenging parts about being on council is that we want more folks to be involved. But a lot of folks don't understand the process of, well, you, we don't always just have public hearings at council meetings, for example, right? And so, reach out to us, be in conversation with us, so that if, if we are able to build power together, rather than us being up here and, and y'all being there, but being, working together, let's do that, okay? And, and it means a lot to have you all here. We got a bunch of nuggets who are supposed to be in school right now, but I'm glad you're here, because we, there's no school today. Okay. The teachers were like, I, I, we didn't do that. We're res- Well, I'm happy that all the nuggets are here, so that we get to see who is impacted. And also to be able to see what it looks like to be here and have power and be participating in the political process. So stay in conversation with us. And, and I hope that we, as, as we are in this time, that we can continue to change the way that the city operates, the way that the city interacts with marginalized communities. You have a lot of allies here on this council, so please don't hesitate to connect with us. And again, city staff, please call on us, and I'm happy to be of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosami is in queue, followed by a couple of other council members. I do just want to say that we don't typically have staff present at council meetings, but I do want to see if the staff that have been working on the sighting want to give us any more information, just so we have it as part of the record of today's proceedings. And I'm getting enthusiastic nods from our staff.
Chair Bender, members of the committee, thank you so much. We, I, I just wanted to say, from the perspective of staff, and I, I think I speak for some of my other colleagues, acknowledge, again, the difficult position that everyone is in. I want to make sure that, and I know that Mr. Frank has additional information to share, I, I want to make sure that we speak, again, out loud how much and how wide we have been looking at other sites, and that there is no perfect site. That we, as we looked, we looked at empty nursing homes as far as, as the county says, the Brooklands. We have looked at schools, and I have just this morning spoken to Ed Graff on the possibility of schools. We have looked at other nursing homes potentially that are in the city. We have looked at other sites that the city owns or that the county owns. We have looked at warehouses, we have looked at empty buildings. We are considering the possibility of places where there are rental units and whether or not we can talk to those landlords. All of those take time. All of those will take time. So I, I just want to share out loud that whatever solution we get to, and I know that you share this with us, that there is a sense of urgency to do something to provide better safety and better outcomes for those at the encampment.
Madam President and council members, David Frank from CPET, it would be in the interests of time, right? Because it seems like you'll delay until next week, and I'm fearful that we then won't have answered all the questions you have, and there will still be the belief or the perception that if only we had looked at this other thing, there'd be a solution that would be more appealing to more of you. I would ask then that, as a body, if possible, you tell us what we're optimizing for, right? We have tried to date, I said yesterday, to optimize for how quickly can we have it done? And our answer, even for that quickest thing, was between one month and two months, for as few public dollars as possible, knowing that some amount of that will be the city's, and that we are working towards a permanent solution, that this is interim, and that it be as close as possible to the current encampment. We heard that loud and clear from you, from the residents in the encampment, and from the, their nearby stakeholders. So if some of those are not the factors we should be optimizing for, we need to hear that from you. We can probably find something faster and cheaper if we let go of where is the location. It doesn't have to be within a half mile or whatever of the current encampment. We can probably get it done faster, probably not, but if we spent more money. We, if you're willing to have it take longer, then we can renovate a building and have a much nicer thing, but that would take longer, cost more money, and what do we do in the meantime? So at, at the risk of seeming to lecture, I'm not exactly sure what you are hoping we do between now and next week. And it would be great to hear from you, preferably as a body, what it is, the, the solution that you are hoping for, so we don't stand here before you on Wednesday afternoon and hear, no, that's not it either. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to thank city staff for all the work they've done. I also like to thank my colleagues for, you know, the deliberative thinking that they've had around this issue. I'd like to thank the community for coming out. You know, I did, I didn't vote for the site 2600 yesterday, and my concern has been the children. And my concern still is the children. And as somebody who lives, as somebody who lives close to that area, and somebody who goes to the cup foods to, to buy his groceries, who goes to Tofik Mosque to pray, who goes to the Coptic Church, you know, I, I know that area quite well. And it's, and it's not going to be a suitable site. And, and the other thing is, my concern has been, and thinking about this, we've housed, Ward Six has housed encampment for the last couple of months. So it's, it has been in my ward. We've heard the issues of the syringes, we've heard the issues of, of neighbors, even though there's a wall, even behind the wall. The people that live there have called us, contacted my office, and said, you know, our children are picking up syringes. We, we have too much rubbish and, and, and garbage there. So I think this, the biggest problem has always been, we are looking for area, we're, we're looking to house a vulnerable community in a vulnerable community. And that's, that's the problem. We are not, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not an affluent ward, you know, we, we, we're working class, mainly immigrant population. And this pressure is a lot on us, right? These are our community members who are there, we want to house them. But we don't want to create a crisis by trying to solve a crisis. So tomorrow, if these young children are affected by this, then it's going to be on us. And I think that's something that we have to make a decision on. So I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily supporting the Roof Depot. I think that's another issue. There's communities that live there as well. You know, you're going to have the same issue here. So I think we have to find a, a different proposition. But to house this in, in our wards, in, in sewers, I think it's going to be very difficult, and it's going to be traumatic. And we, and just this turnout should have an impact on us in terms of making our decision today. And I, so I, that's why I'm very supportive of, of Councilmember Ellison's motion. And I think he made, he made a very good point. It was only a day that we had to look at these different options. Some of us had more information, but it was only a day that we had that. So I think having, having a pause is not going to hurt us, even though we know winter's coming as well, and that's a problem. But I think we have to listen to the community and to the children. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I concur with many of my colleagues that the right decision is to delay this vote and to roll up our sleeves and engage deeply with the information that we have before us, as well as to ask for more. Yesterday, when we were debating the topic, there were different answers, different times, on the same question, about financing and who gets to make the decision and how and when. And so as a policymaker, I don't think it's good for us to make final votes on lack of information or disjointed information. So I think the extra time is about ensuring we're making a vote that is based on facts and information that's available to all of us, because still, yet, we all need to come to an agreement about how some of the financing happens behind any particular project. And, and I, I do take ownership of the fact that I was asking council members to really mentally prepare for making a site location vote this week. That was not to say, make the wrong vote. I had always been advocating for the vote in my ward, I was never pushing the vote in the school. And so I just want us to be really clear-eyed about the votes we take here and to learn along the way about what this means, and how we go into a room in the morning to talk about racial equity, and we plan it and we envision it. But when it's happening, you know, that's when we're not quite integrating the actions with the words. And so my job is to make sure that we integrate those two things as much as possible. And I acknowledge that we're all human beings and that we all make decisions differently when we are in times of conflict, when we're in times of high pressure, when we have a lot of public eyes on, on what we do. So hopefully you will be the, the guiding light for, for us moving forward and can help us, keep us, can help keep us accountable, as many other communities have kept the council accountable and on track on a lot of different issues, me included. So, you know, one of the things that I think we, we still need time to explore, and why I'm supporting this motion, is, is this notion of like the Water Yard Usage Fund, and, you know, when, when the city staged the early vote center there, you know, did we have to pay ourselves back for that, or how did that exactly work? So there's just a lot of questions, and we should just look into them and know them. Not because I'm asking you to vote for Roof Depot, I've been very clear with you that my priority today was take the school off the site, and let's figure out how we work with the residents and their outreach workers and the grassroots groups and MUD to figure out what we can make work within the next two to three months of where folks will go. That doesn't mean we take action in two to three months, that means we're co-developing that plan together and talking together more consistently. And while I recognize that staff have been working their fingers to the bone on this effort, I think there's, needs to be more interface from council members in that, and more coordinated, organized interface, because the, the voices that we represent are the voices of many, many residents that are engaging with us on this topic. And so we have to make sure that there's a, there's a layer of how those voices get weaved into the staff planning and the community planning and the programmatic discussions we're having. So with that, I'll just say, I appreciate everyone really thinking this through and getting back to text messages and the emails and everything that was happening last night and early this morning. I'm really proud of that, and, and I hope that we can make a, a better decision that feels more in line with our values next week.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Ellison in queue. I do want to note that I, I heard from our staff that they would appreciate a staff direction today to come from the council. So I don't know if that is possible for us to try to accomplish now, but hearing that, that direction on the prioritization and how we would prioritize our sites would help our staff be able to come back with something new that isn't just a repeated of the information that we have. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. And I had more of a boring, mundane, technical issue, and possibly thinking of more direction for staff. But there's one part of the action that's still in the amendment that's going to become outdated and not necessary, doesn't make any sense, which if you look at the, the action that we're tabling, has a large number one, it says continue work with the coalition. It has a large number two that says return to the Housing Committee on September 26th. I would like to strike that, because we are referring the whole action that hasn't been approved yet to the 26th. So we don't want to direct staff to, to give a report back on something we haven't approved yet. I hope that makes sense to my colleagues. I also think we may be able to give direction to staff. So I'm going to consider what I just said was an amendment to strike number two in the action. So if you want to move it over to, to, and get, if I could speak to that, and maybe also an additional amendment, or, we'll see.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. My, and maybe I can recognize the clerk, my understanding of Councilmember Ellison's motion was that it would be referring our decision on the staff direction as a whole to the next meeting, so that we wouldn't be voting on the staff direction at all today. But maybe I misunderstood the motion. So, Mr. Clerk, could you help clarify?
Madam President, council members, the entire item that's under the Committee of the Whole report today includes, as Councilmember Gordon alluded, one, two, and three. This presumes that today's action is final today. It includes coming back to the HPD Committee in the next cycle for implementation plans from staff. Staff will not be able to come forward with implementation plans to the HPD Committee in the next cycle if this whole action is postponed to an adjourned meeting next week after HPD meets. So to Councilmember Gordon's point, it is to remove this, simply because procedurally, we don't have an action for staff to respond to.
Thank you. But wasn't the motion to delay action on all of those items correct?
Correct. But there's no action on number two. I think Councilmember Gordon is simply saying that can come out of the motion.
So Councilmember Gordon is moving an amendment to Councilmember Ellison's motion to take action on some of those items today.
The clerk would suggest that really what needs to happen is a recognition by the body that number two can come out, and there's no need for a vote.
Let's pull up number two. Councilmember Gordon.
Well, a recognition by the body is, is enough. That's all right. I don't know, it just didn't make any sense. I suppose we could change the date when we're going to get the report back on the details, but I thought we could do that at the next adjourned meeting, when we're looking at it, and it might make sense to pull it out. The other things I think that we could direct staff to do, potentially, is expand the circle of the search, although it did sound like they're looking at sites as far away as the Brooklands, but obviously that came up. I also think we should have staff to expand the search in terms of city-owned property. I brought that up earlier. I think we need to look at what space is even nearby or not too far away, that might be warehouses that somebody else owns, or there's other space and those kinds of things. I'm not sure what other directions. I don't think we ever gave them a limit on funding and money, but of course, we want them to come back and tell us what things would cost. And we heard one, we, they thought the Roof Depot would cost a lot more, and we heard about that. But obviously, we never were able to cap any amount of money when we said, go out and look. So I don't know if we have to give more direction on that. And I don't want the direction to be to take longer. So I'm not willing to say, find something that might be ready by April next year or something like that. I think we need the time of the essence. I don't know if we want to put that in an amendment, or if there can be some consensus around that. One of the things we sometimes are able to do up here is just give direction in our speeches. So I'm going to, I guess, let that hang in the air and see if folks might agree to that, if they want to comment on it. But if we're moving to pull, if we can just delete number two, I think that would make the clerk's life easier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to get clarity here. So Councilmember Gordon's motion is to strike item number two, which reads, return to the Housing Policy Development Committee by September 26th with a plan for the navigation center that includes all of the above information for consideration and potential adoption by the city council, correct?
Madam President, Councilmember Conno, that's what the current motion reads.
Okay.
It presumed that the council will be taking final action today.
I understand.
And just to clarify, Mr. Clerk, you're talking about item two under the Housing Policy and Development Committee's report?
I'm talking about item 1.2 under Committee of the Whole, which is on the top of page two and reads, number two, return to the Housing Policy and Development Committee by September 26, 2018 with a plan for the navigation center that includes all of the above, which is the number one, for consideration and adoption by the council. We're adjourning this meeting to following that meeting. So rather than have this item show up on HPD and then have the special council, or the adjourned council meeting immediately following to essentially do this, this could come out of the referral that's being continued.
Okay. I understand.
So I just want, so I just wanted to get that clarified, and then I wanted to speak on that. So I believe that we should just stick to the Ellison motion, the original Ellison motion, because item number two, the sequence of events here that we're proposing as, as policymakers, is that we delay action on this item, which would have naturally happened today as a city council meeting, but we're choosing to keep that conversation going, to allow policymakers time
time, to dig into the details of what's been presented yesterday, the conversations we've had tonight, the information we're getting from community today, and to not direct staff to do anything until next week when we meet and we take clear action on what it is that we want to do with the staff direction. So if we strike item number two today, maybe next week we come back together and we're like, actually, we like that, we just want to change the date. We want to not be September 26th, we want it to be like October 15th or whatever. So my suggestion is let's just keep the staff direction how it is, go back to the Ellison motion, vote to give more time for council members to come together next week, and then that's where the tweaks would happen to either the staff direction or maybe we choose not to vote for the staff direction at all and we vote for something else. But I think we need time to sit with some of these conversations that have been presented to us with the information that has been presented yesterday, ask for more, get an opportunity to look through our emails, because obviously we've been engaging with community a lot and with each other over the last 24 hours. And I'm sure there's information in there that staff have been sending us, either from the City Attorney's Office or other staff. So I would say that it's probably a little bit hard to try to strike something through right now, considering we could just keep it and tweak it a little bit next week.
Councilmember Gordon.
I didn't want to derail us too far. We can fix it later. I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay, thank you. And I have myself in queue. I think what the clerk was trying to describe was that the date that we included in our staff direction will have passed by the time we hold this meeting. I mean, it's the same day as this meeting. And so the items that we had directed staff to complete by that date will not be able to be completed because we have not made a decision on the site.
Correct.
But as long as we are acknowledging that we know that, we no longer expect staff to come back with those items because we're delaying the entire item, I think everyone is comfortable with that. That returns us back to the underlying Ellison motion, because Councilmember Gordon's motion has been withdrawn. I have Councilmember Ellison.
Geez, that all took so long. I'm almost blanking on what I wanted to say in the first place. Okay, I'm remembering. I wanted to say that to staff's point, I accept staff's challenge. I do not see that the options that we have as a failing of staff. I see the options that we have being a result of some really complicated political dynamics, right? And I think that if staff, staff has expertise in a lot of things, certainly executing something like this is within their expertise. I think navigating political dynamics is something that is the responsibility of the council, not something that is the responsibility of staff. And I think that a lot of what has held up our ability to find better sites are some political dynamics. So I just want to offer, I just want to let staff know that, that I plan to be, you know, working with my colleagues over the weekend and into early next week to be doing our due diligence to maybe unclutter some of the political dynamics getting in the way of us finding a better option. I also would like to urge, you know, I would like to tell folks that, you know, and maybe there's a misunderstanding about what would be happening at Roof Depot, but I mean, the same thing would be happening in the parking lot of Roof Depot. And I just want to let a lot of folks know that whether we put these FEMA-style trailers at Roof Depot, whether we put these FEMA-style trailers at 2600 Mini-HAHA, it is not dignified housing option. And there are, and I believe that there are better options available. I think that right now, I understand the desire to lean into proximity to the current site. And I understand, and as the council member from Ward Five, you know, North Minneapolis, I understand the kind of pride and necessity that comes with community sticking together. But I think right now we are leaning into proximity at the expense of quality. And so I want to urge folks who are demonstrating leadership at the camp, who have put their bodies on the line and their necks on the line to provide services at the camp, to just become a little bit more flexible with regards to the Roof Depot site so that we can actually provide dignified housing. And so, you know, that's just a one political dynamic that I wanted to name. It's a conversation that I plan on having and we'll see where we get over the course of the weekend. But I just wanted to name that this is, that the options that we have are not, if anything, it's a demonstration of the creativity of staff, not a failing of staff. And so I want to, I think that I want to do the work to set up staff to succeed. So I just wanted to name that.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. I do want to just say and acknowledge that we are kind of circling around the Roof Depot site and we have not made any decisions about that site this term. As Councilmember Johnson described, that does have a long history, including some split votes and a lot of community opposition, frankly, to putting a water yard facility at that site to begin with. Many years of planning have gone into that site and putting a water yard there and millions of dollars went into buying the land. Those are not insurmountable. We could choose as a city not to put our water yard there. We could try to use that site temporarily and then assume we're putting a water yard there. I want to verbally ask staff to be prepared to come to our meeting with some more details about the financial ramifications of the various decisions we might make on the Roof Depot site. So delaying construction for one year for a water yard, not putting a water yard there as best as we can with the short timeframe. And I just want to ask my colleagues to be like honest with ourselves about that site and what we actually think is going to happen if we try to use that site as a temporary place and just be just clear and honest with ourselves. And that's not directed at any council member, that's directed at myself too. We have to make difficult decisions. They come with financial decisions along with them. And I just think it's our responsibility to be clear and as clear as we can when we're making these decisions about what we actually think is going to happen in one year or two years or five years. Councilmember Kano.
Sorry, I thought we were going to take a vote. I'm sorry. I'm ready for a vote.
I would love to give a vote. Is there any further discussion on Councilmember Ellison's motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the item is adopted. And that was the entire Cal report, so we have. We have moved and unanimously adopted the motion to delay this item to an adjourned meeting of the City Council on September 26th at 1:30 PM. Okay, that brings us.
2:30.
2:30 PM. That brings us to our next committee meeting, sorry, our next report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That report will be presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman. The.
Thank you for coming. [applause]
eight items forward for approval this morning, including the regular liquor gambling business license approvals. There are a number of rental license reinstatements, as well as accepting grants from a variety of outside partners for projects located in the city. There are eight items for approval. I move all eight items.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the EDRS report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich is absent. President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from our Enterprise Committee chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. Before you today in your agenda packets are four items for consideration. I would actually like to take the initiative of moving to delay item number one, one cycle, just to ensure that this item takes into account non-traditional families, which is something that we have heard through this process, but I've not yet seen that reflected in the final documents before you today. Our focus as a council has been taken off of this action for other priorities, which is fine. I promise to get this sorted by our next meeting and involve colleagues as necessary. The three items I would like to move before you today are all IT-related, a contract with Terminal Four, Sierra Cedar for the PeopleSoft module, and an RFP for ServiceNow. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved to postpone item one and approve the other items in the Enterprise Committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll just thank you, Madam Chair, for taking on this piece. I think there was a lot of comment and discussion and discomfort with that piece and so appreciate your leadership on that. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is a report from our Housing Policy and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. There's two items coming forward from the Housing Policy and Development Committee. The first item has to do with East Town Apartments and it's a revised bond issuance for 815 Sixth Street South. The second item, actually, I think I was able to game the system and I jump-started this by referring it to Committee of the Whole. So this is actually a staff direction about all the tent encampment, that it would still be good if we approved it formally as a council. I would just direct the City Coordinator and CPED Director to work with Health and Finance staff to develop implementation plans for the establishment and operation of two things. One, one or more navigation centers, which we've talked about at length now and given more kind of input, and we'll be having a adjourned meeting to talk about further. And two, establishment and operation of one or more culturally focused and informed transitional housing options focused on serving American Indian individuals and families suffering from chronic homelessness. That item, we'll be asking staff to report back to the Housing Policy Development Committee on October 24th with an implementation plan for. I feel comfortable moving both of these items forward, even though the navigation center had a report back at Committee of the Whole that we've already seen, but I think it's appropriate just to keep it together and move it forward. So I'll move both items forward.
Thank you. And I do want to just restate my intention that if we do intend to have a public hearing that we publicly notice it, so I'll just go ahead and work with the Chair and the clerk to make sure that happens if we imagine we'll have a hearing. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. We bring forward one item today on our report, which is some amendments to the 2017 federal agenda incorporating several changes in response to the administration's proposals on a number of different fronts. So I'll go ahead and move that item.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward three items today. The first is gift acceptance for the use of the facilities at Metropolitan State University for urban scholars. The second is the establishment of the North Side Green Zone Task Force. And the third is a staff direction to the Health Department for the GVI program to be able to gather necessary data and information from all of the violence prevention partners to update gang, click, and group information, and that's to be done every six months, starting immediately. That was in response to the bloodiest weekend that we've had in Minneapolis a few weekends ago. It disproportionately impacted North Minneapolis and so wanting to make sure that we have good policy in place and practices in place to make sure we're keeping up to date. Thank you. And I am happy to answer any questions and I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Ways and Means Committee presented by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has 18 items to approve today. Item number one is a contract amendment with Questions and Solutions Engineering, Inc., for additional consulting services for the public service building project. Item number two is a contract amendment with Technology Management Corporations for additional information, technology, and audiovisual consulting services for the new public service building project. And item number three is a contract amendment with ICE Builders, Inc., for change orders and contract closeout regarding the Target Center ICE replacement project. Item number four is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Tarazoo Floor Update Project. Item number five is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Steam Room Cooling Equipment Renovation Project. Item number six is a bid for Minneapolis Convention Center Meeting Room and Ballroom Wall Scum Replacement Project. Item number seven is a bid for the Target Center Fall Protection Anchor Project. Item number eight is another bid for the Telecommunications PBX Equipment and Maintenance. Item number nine is a gift acceptance for city staff travel expenses to the International Association of Transportation Regulators Annual Conference. Item number 10 is a real estate transactions with the Metropolitan Council for the Southwest Light Rail Project. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Patrick Bourne for professional planning and coordination services. And item number 12 is a contract with SMG for U.S. Bank Stadium Traffic Control Services. Item number 13 is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for the Minnesota Expectant and Parenting Student Program. information, technology, and audiovisual consulting services for the new public service building project. And item number three is a contract amendment with ICE Builders, Inc., for change orders and contract closeout regarding the Target Center ICE replacement project. Item number four is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Tarazoo Floor Update Project. Item number five is a bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center Steam Room Cooling Equipment Renovation Project. Item number six is a bid for Minneapolis Convention Center Meeting Room and Ballroom Wall Scum Replacement Project. Item number seven is a bid for the Target Center Fall Protection Anchor Project. Item number eight is another bid for the telecommunications PBX Equipment and Maintenance. Item number nine is a gift acceptance for city staff travel expenses to the International Association of Transportation Regulators Annual Conference. Item number 10 is real estate transactions with the Metropolitan Council for the Southwest Light Rail Project. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Patrick Bourne for professional planning and coordination services. And item number 12 is a contract with SMG for US Bank Stadium Traffic Control Services. Item number 13 is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health for the Minnesota Expectant and Parenting Student Program. Item number 14 is a contract with CoStar Realty Information, Inc., for access to real estate information database. Item number 15 is a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters. And item number 16 is a collective bargaining agreement with the Machinists. Item number 17 is a appointed position in the Minneapolis Police Department, and that's for the Director of Public Information. And item number 18 is a contract with King and Spalding LLP for independent investigation services. And I move approval of all 18 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those items are adopted. That returns us back to item number 18. Councilmember Worsami's motion to approve all other items, is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those items are adopted. That returns us back to item number 18. I'll recognize Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The motion that you should have before you would be to, instead of authorizing a contract with King Spalding to conduct this independent neutral review, would be to instead appropriate the $195,000 identified for that purpose in connection with emergency services and the ketamine appropriated to the Health Department to issue an RFP for homeless street outreach, harm reduction efforts, and support services provided for the Hiawatha encampment residents and other individuals experiencing homelessness. Fund should be awarded as soon as possible, but no later than November 30, 2018, and further directing staff to bring a report on funded recommendations back to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee for review and approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon has moved an amendment for item number 18. Councilmember Ellison.
I was, you know what? I don't have anything to say about Councilmember Gordon's motion at the moment. I was going to make some comments more broadly about the item, but maybe I'll hold off.
Okay. And actually, I think I misspoke that Councilmember Gordon's motion would be a substitute motion to replace Councilmember Worsami's original. Councilmember Schrader.
I just want to speak out in support of Councilmember Gordon's motion. I think we have just had a conversation about the lack of funding to support, to really address the housing crisis that we're having in this city, and I think that we need to be, look at every dollar going out of this building very carefully, and I think this is a great, a good example of that.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I appreciate the intention behind this motion, but am not currently feeling super happy about it because of the fact that this still is not acknowledging the victims that were harmed by the ketamine research. I would like to make the point that we know that the data shows that it is disproportionately black folks. I want to be very clear that since the beginning of chattel slavery, black folks have been used as experiments, and I have now, we have now seen that here in Minneapolis with ketamine. And so this particular, the money going towards this study is, I can't support that because I don't see where there is a value add in it that the Civil Rights Department's work did not already achieve. And I really appreciate wanting to make sure that our dollars are going towards our values. I just have some serious concerns that we still have not yet discussed the violation of our residents' civil rights. It is not okay for people to be opted in to a medical study without their consent. Thank you. And the fact that we haven't talked about that, we haven't prioritized that, I mean, I really, I want to see the city investing in this encampment, and I also don't want the erasure of violence towards black bodies to be erased in that process. So I'm open to having this conversation, but I just have to say that I'm really disappointed that despite my pleas, pleas for people to begin to center victims, that we still don't have that in front of us. So I just want to name that, and that we really need to be thinking about this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was prepared to say one thing, and I got a little thrown off. I'm still on the fence about Councilmember Gordon's motion. I'm open to it, but again, just to echo some of the comments from Councilmember Cunningham, I think that it may be a little bit too broad for the, for the, you know, I think the specific harm to community. And I get that there are issues with regards to which stakeholders are liable in this situation, and I want to honor that, and I want to respect that. I don't think that the city, you know, is, I think it's complicated. But the other thing that I also want to iterate, so I'm on the fence about Councilmember Gordon's motion, and I would, I offer, you know, I invite colleagues to sort of win me over on that, but I definitely do not support the allocation of this money to continue a study that our own Civil Rights Department has completed. I think that I would need evidence that the objectivity of our Civil Rights Department was compromised, and no one, not a single person, has been able to provide evidence that our Civil Rights Department's objectivity was compromised in this instance. I think we have a sense of what happened. I think our Civil Rights Department did a great job in completing the study, and I'm not going to support, you know, nearly $200,000 that could go elsewhere to go towards an independent contractor who's just going to tell us what our own Civil Rights Department has already told us. So that's definitely, you know, so I stand to not allocate this money that direction, and I'm on the fence about Councilmember Gordon's motion.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, and I agree with the sentiment of Councilmember Ellison. You know, I had raised concerns in the Ways and Means Committee meeting about this King and Spalding contract, and I intend to vote against that spending today, but from a process standpoint, while I absolutely support funding homeless street outreach, this idea of allocating the money now without knowing which fund it comes from seems procedurally, and Mr. Ruff is here, so maybe you could comment on this, but procedurally, it seems to me at least pretty unprecedented. I can't remember a time when we've done this before, and so my advice, or my interests would be, look, we've got this housing committee meeting coming up next week in the adjourned council session, just as we are taking a delay on this question of the site and making sure that we have plans in place, why don't we bring this up at that meeting and at the adjourned council meeting and actually have a funding source picked out, a specific amount of money for what the need is and some more plans around this? So maybe Mr. Ruff, I don't know, Madam President, if that's okay to have Mr. Ruff speak to kind of this process of allocating money without a funding source, but I'd be interested in that because it just seems to raise a lot of concerns for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I believe there was a funding source identified for the original allocation, but it would be very helpful to have those details.
Madam President, Councilmember Johnson, yes, clearly, we do recommend having not just a funding source, but preferably a funding string in any RCA that involves spending money. Certainly would be happy to work with staff and elected officials' office to come back to you next week with more specifics, and if there are questions that you want to pose to us about the different budgets that it may come from and make sure we thoroughly explain it, we would be happy to return next week for that action. Thank you, Mr. Ruff, and I think that is consistent, too, with my concerns around the King and Spalding contract in committees, that we were, we didn't have funding essentially for it. We were tapping into contingency funding for it because the police budget was over. We were over the police budget because of our Super Bowl expenses. So, you know, I guess I would move that we send this item to the Housing Committee for, you know, more discussion next week as part of what's going on with the Hiawatha encampment, and hopefully, the author can work in the meantime with our finance staff to identify a funding source, and then we can actually get the money out the door with a funding source and have a plan in place.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Mr. Ruff, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. So the original $195,000 allocation before us today does have a funding source attached to it, correct? Or is that not correct?
Madam President, it does have a funding source attached to it. I think I was referencing what Councilmember Johnson, because I was at Ways and Means when he raised some of the questions about, is this coming out of contingency or not? I think the discussion of the current status of the police budget involves a little more depth than just, is it over or under? You know, there are multiple factors that go into the police budget, it's not just the Super Bowl, and clearly, we had more revenues to offset the expenses for the police budget for the Super Bowl for 2018 as well, and so it's not like they spent money that was unexpected. And so that's where, if the council is asking for more of a thorough discussion, I guess that's what I was referencing, maybe to come back to next week, if we may end up with the police being still the appropriate place for this to be funded, and if there's consensus on that, I think we can explain how that can happen, given what the contingency situation is. And so that's what we heard at Ways and Means, which is the rest of the council didn't have the depth of that discussion.
And just to be clear, that is true no matter which use this fund would be used for, including the original use before us.
When you say which use, I'm not sure, are you talking about the police?
The King and Spalding contract.
Yeah, Council President, I believe that's true.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I mean, I think in a lot of, in a lot of ways, we are kind of talking about money that we haven't figured out in a lot of different areas, right? I mean, we just spent a lot of time talking about $2,000, $2.5 million that we're going to invest in a temporary housing solution that's going to come out of contingency, or we're going to be stretching a lot of budgets to figure out where that comes from. I think the same thing is happening, you know, with this. And so, you know, I, and the other thing that I want to just point out is that something close to $50,000 has already been spent in the sort of scoping process, right? There's a, there was an amount, it's my understanding that we've already committed that we can't just reallocate. We do owe King and Spalding some money. So I'm not sure that this motion quite works. I'm not sure that I'm supportive of this today because I'm just not clear on the allocation, and I think there is some money that we can't reallocate because it's already been committed by the mayor's office. So, and I also think it's just a really safe bet right now that any money that we don't spend on this is going to end up getting spent on homeless services and on outreach. I think that's very clearly the priority and the urgency of this council. I think that's where we're headed, and I think we're already going to spend more money than we've identified as of today towards that. And so I think it's not necessarily necessary to pass this motion to produce the result, and I take the spirit of it, that we're looking at competing priorities here, and I think the spirit of this is very appropriate, but I'm not sure that we need this motion in order to achieve that outcome.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. As I indicated yesterday, I don't support spending $195,000 for this use and this contract. I understand folks have different perspectives on that. I did want to correct my assumption from, my understanding from watching the Ways and Means Committee was that it was a total of $245,000, but that has been corrected, and the total amount is 195, because that includes the $50,000 that has already been spent. But that doesn't change my underlying position. I agree with a lot of the concerns my colleagues are raising about how we do budgeting, and I agree that that applies to this original motion, and it's part of why I didn't support it to begin with. I do want to encourage us to kind of separate out these questions. So if the delay is because we need more information about the funding source in order to support the contract, that's one thing. If the delay is to figure out how we want to spend $195,000, I mean, we could do that anyway, so if Councilmember Gordon or any other council member wanted to try to allocate $195,000 to a new use, I mean, we don't typically do that outside of our budget process, but we do, we certainly do do that. So I don't know that they have to be connected in this way to achieve the intended outcome. And I think I had one, oh, I had one other point that, I want to say this as delicately as possible, but I just, I want to make sure that when we talk about liability, that we just be clear that as our role as elected officials, that carries a lot of weight, and I don't think we can, I don't have enough information myself to be able to make conclusions about liability. It's certainly serious, and I think frankly, that was part of the intention of this contract, was to help dig into some of those details more. So that is, I had to say, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I did pass out an alternative motion. I did have the opportunity to work a little bit with finance, so at least we've identified now the funding source. The funding source, it should be down there. If it got stuck, I apologize. It's also probably in your inbox. I did copy council members on that. That said, I'm also open to looking at, is there a way we can maybe use some of this funding to support some work via civil rights to address the deeper issues about trauma in this that Councilmember Cunningham was mentioning about? And I'm also sympathetic to those who think maybe delaying this and taking it up again at our adjourned meeting along with the other items would be important. I do want to just emphasize the urgency of all of this. I think it, I mean, we need to address the really poor behavior, and I believe it was a lot of county employees who were engaged into it in terms of giving people dangerous drugs without their permission, and maybe without any kind of medical justification about it, and how we may be complicit as an entity ourselves because our police department was involved in that. I think that's a serious issue. I don't think it has the same urgency that it does now, and I think it's pretty clear we have a lot of clear, good information, and it's not sure we need an expensive, independent study like this, so I would have probably have opposed this anyway. So after I heard that there were concerns about funding the study at Committee of the Whole, I immediately was thinking, well, maybe there's a win-win we could have here to help address some of the urgency we have around this encampment and this relocation efforts, and how the Navigation Center will completely fail if we don't have some transition in mind and some support for building trust and confidence about how people can go there and get real help. So this critical need for support to make this successful was very present in my mind, and so I believe moving the money there would be appropriate. That said, I see there's other people who want to speak. I just did want to indicate my willingness to look at this a little bit more as well, but I'm also happy to pass it today. I believe I did, I may have stumbled along in the process. I believe this is actually a substitute motion, and we haven't even moved to substitute, so to have it properly before us. So we'll have to think about that and maybe check in with the clerk and see how we should do this if the discussion comes up that we are ready to do this today.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to speak for myself here. I think a motion like this to go and usurp money that for months has been looked at for something else feels wholly inappropriate. As much as we would like to move money arbitrarily to our efforts for other causes, really important causes, this isn't how we do it. That's just my, myself here with my budget chair hat on. I think there's just a lot of issues with that, so I cannot support the substitute motion in terms of the motion, the original motion. I just want to take a minute and push back on the idea that this independent investigation is some kind of indictment or even criticism of our Civil Rights Department. This is something that we all agreed was necessary just three short months ago. We heard from the community, their asks were clear. They wanted to get to the bottom of what happened between EMS personnel and our Minneapolis Police Department. They wanted to ensure impartiality, so they asked that the investigator have no Minnesota or Minneapolis ties. That's what we heard when we gave public comment in the Public Safety Committee. Sally Yates's integrity and decades of experience pursuing justice made her the best candidate for this investigation. I think to go back on that now is to turn our backs on what the community asked of us, not a review of the OPCR process or Sally Yates, but an unbiased review of this specific situation that's very troubling. Second, this is an abnormal situation within civil rights. There was a data breach, and we don't know who was affected because of that, or how the public narrative that was formed out of an incomplete report impacted the completion of that report. That's not civil rights fault, but that is the reality of the situation. So we're talking about an investigation into our police department. We've heard time and time again from the public that they want more scrutiny and oversight of the police department, and I don't understand how us making certain that this anomaly is taken seriously is somehow a disservice to the public or to our enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be a lot less eloquent. We should decide whether or not we want to do the study or not. That's really what this is about. Since no one has been lobbying this issue, probably no one knows where the votes are. So that's what's important right now, is are we going to spend money on the study or not? We are in a budget process, and that's how additional allocations on other issues, in my humble opinion, should be addressed. I can't speak to whether or not we have enough money going towards the homeless encampment because I'm not aware of any money at this point going towards the final solution on the homeless encampment. So I would, at this point, urge us to simply take an up or down vote on whether or not we want to fund this study, and then focus all of our collective efforts on what is going to happen going forward with the people who are impacted by the homeless encampment and what their next steps are, and use a subsequent process and/or the budget process to address that issue.
Councilmember Ellison.
Council President, thank you. I think that I, I don't think that, I do think that there needs to be a community benefit out of this situation, but I just think that there needs to be more thought and input put into it. I don't think it needs to be structured in this way. So I don't think I'll be supporting Councilmember Gordon's substitute motion. But with that being said, to Councilmember Goodman's point, I do think we should take an up or down vote, and my position on that is that we shouldn't be spending this money in this way. You know, with all due respect to Councilmember Palmasano, I don't actually think the council did make a choice in this specific decision. I think this decision came, you know, unilaterally from the mayor's office, and while I respect sort of the effort and the intention behind that, you know, a lot of us found out about this contract in the newspaper, right? And so I don't think that this is something that my constituents have asked for. I don't think this is something that I really heard the public at large ask for. And if we voted on this a couple of months ago, I, you know, I will humbly stand corrected, but I don't believe that we did. I don't believe that, you know, I've gotten push from my constituents to spend money in this way and to move on this effort. And so I think that we should just go ahead and take a straight vote on the original motion, but I won't be supporting Councilmember Gordon's substitute motion.
Thank you. I have myself in queue. I agree with the general direction that a number of council members have described, which is to separate these issues out and vote on this contract or not today. I wanted to make a couple of other points. The first was just to kind of echo what Councilmember Ellison said. You know, we've had two very long discussions today at council, and that's fine. I think it's part of our jobs. Both of them, though, have been related to things that are basically being announced publicly before fully engaging the city council. And I think if we kind of better work together and fully engage before decisions are announced, we will have less of this kind of back and forth. Not that it's a bad thing, it's just a fact. And then I finally also wanted to just echo Councilmember Palmasano's remarks about Ms. Yates. I know that having someone as prominent as a former U.S. Attorney General, being willing to, you know, engage with the city is a significant thing, and I believe that she has probably provided some time pro bono or at a reduced expense to the city. And, you know, I think no matter how many one votes on whether or not to spend the money on this contract, we all appreciate her leadership in general and her efforts on this. Is there any further, so, Councilmember Gordon, did you, is there a motion before us from Councilmember Gordon that's a substitute motion?
Madam President, I have three motions that I captured, and I'll lock them backwards. We'd vote on the last one made. The last one I caught was a motion from Councilmember Johnson, which was to refer to the adjourned meeting, the entire subject.
Wait to withdraw.
The second motion I caught was the substitute offered by Councilmember Gordon. The underlying motion moved as part of the committee report was approval of the contract presented through Ways and Means. So the action before us is to consider a second, first and foremost, to Gordon's substitute, which would put it in front of the body. As a substitute, I would clarify, then debate would be on whether or not this is the issue to substitute with the committee's recommendation. If the body substitutes Gordon's motion for the committees, there is still the opportunity to further refine, tweak that as the motion. So that would be the first vote. The second vote would be on whether to pass it. Also to clarify, because this is an appropriation of monies that didn't go through the process of the line item, it needs to be in the form of a resolution, which is why it came out in a different format, and it requires a minimum of seven votes to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for that clarification. So we have a motion before us from Councilmember Gordon that's a substitute motion. This is the one that is the general, oh, we have two things. The general appropriation resolution is serving as the substitute motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Gordon.
So I was going to move to substitute, and then we have to vote whether or not we're willing to consider a substitute. Is that correct?
Madam President, the first question is whether or not the body wishes to consider this substitute motion in place of the committee's report.
Okay, so this is a motion to substitute.
Yes. Councilmember Schrader.
I take all my colleagues' comments very seriously. I will be supporting this motion. I think that I very much respect the budget process, but nothing we've been doing regarding the housing crisis has been normal. You know, I think that there is a process for putting this in the budget and having a thoughtful discussion, yet we're talking about doing new things without new money. And I applaud Councilmember Gordon for bringing this forward so we can have that discussion, and I think this gets us toward that.
Thank you. So on Councilmember Gordon's substitute motion, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Nay.
Cunningham.
Nay.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Palmasano.
Nay.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Nay.
President Bender.
Nay.
There are three ayes and 10 nays.
That motion fails, and it brings us back to the underlying motion made by Councilmember Worsami to approve this item as recommended by the Ways and Means Committee. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say a few words on it. I know, it's my understanding that Hennepin Health has a couple of independent reviews into their EMTs and the study itself that they had, so I think we all look forward to those findings. I think that that's appropriate and a good step. I also want to credit the mayor and the police chief with swift action to change the policy as well around this, because I think we can all agree that our police officers should not be instructing or suggesting specific medications or treatments for anybody. So I want to give them credit for that. I will be voting against this contract today. I think we've gotten a comprehensive report from our civil rights department. I really appreciate all the work they put into it. I appreciate the mayor and the chief's actions, changing policy, and I think we can move forward knowing that, you know, we've learned from this, and also that we have more information on the way from these independent reviews.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I also want to just acknowledge that I don't think that this was out of line three months ago for the mayor's office to pursue this. I don't think that this was necessarily an irresponsible or a bad decision. I think if you think back to where we were, we were at a moment when we weren't sure how the report was going to be finished in light of it having been released to the public prematurely. I think that we weren't clear where culpability was to the extent that we are now. I think we've learned a lot more about what we need to know in the areas of research that we need to engage in. And so I don't think that it felt intuitively disproportionate to what we needed at that moment. I think we've learned since then. I think that we've learned quite a lot. I think that OPCR did a very good job finishing the report. I think that the county has a lot of work in progress, and I think that we've heard in relation to the encampment and a crisis of homelessness that we're wrestling with, that there are ways that this money needs to get spent, and that as we're thinking about how we prioritize, I'm going to vote no on this, but I'm voting no very respectfully to the mayor's original intent. I just think that we have to be responsive to shifting priorities in our city and to shifting needs as we learn more.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Nay.
President Bender.
Nay.
There are three ayes and 10 nays.
That motion fails, and that completes the Ways and Means agenda. I believe we have the executive next. So, oh, don't forget zoning and planning. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schrader. That completes the Ways and Means agenda. We have our zoning and planning committee next, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The zoning and planning committee will be bringing forward, brings forward four items. The first is granting an appeal for a site plan review at 52 Tupent Avenue North and 100 Irving Avenue North. The second is approving, application for rezoning at 1625 Marshall Street Northeast. The third is also approving a rezoning at 1627 Marshall Avenue, Marshall Street Northeast. And the fourth is approving an environmental assessment worksheet at 30 South Third Street. I'll stand for any questions and move approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the report. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. On a lighter note, item number one is an item that the city has been working towards for the better part of the past 10 years. I would argue that for, and this is the relocation of the city's impound lot, not a sexy issue and certainly not something that everybody wants to talk about, but as we have a conversation generally about equity, I want to remind folks that the people who most likely get towed are those that live in areas where there's already a parking problem, where they have a language barrier, or where we are more aggressively enforced than other areas. And then what happens is people go down to the impound lot and wait in long lines, sometimes in inclement weather, and it's almost like being punished a second time. First, you're being punished because your car's being towed, then you're being punished because of the conditions of the facility that you need to wait in when you're getting your car back. We have been attempting to relocate this impound lot for a number of years, and this action is approving the final site plan. I really commend our city staff for working extensively with the Bassett Creek Valley Oversight Committee, as well as the Harrison and Bryn Mawr neighborhoods, to be able to cite this facility close to a bus line with a good amount of greening, as well as giving up a good portion of the facility itself in order to redevelop that land in the Bassett Creek Valley in a more equitable way in the Harrison neighborhood. So this is a very good news story. It's taken a long time to get to this point, and since this seems to be the final step before we start construction, I just wanted to note that today.
Councilmember Schrader.
I also just want to echo the comments of Councilmember Goodman. The city staff did an amazing job working with a very kind of extensive environmental ask from the planning commission and then from zoning and planning, so I just want to commend their work and make sure it's noticed.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next order of business is the reports of our special committees, and we have a report from the executive committee given by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee has referred three items to the city council, which are the collective bargaining agreements with the 911 Supervisor's Unit, the Supervisor's Unit and the Laborer's Unit, and I move all three items for referral to the Ways and Means Committee.
Council Vice President has moved the report, including the referral to the Ways and Means Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred to the Ways and Means Committee next cycle. The next order of business is notices for ordinance introductions. We have three notices to give today. First, councilmembers Fletcher and Cunningham give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the code with respect to fire and police protection related to the powers and duties of the fire chief and authorized department activities. Second, councilmember Reich gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the code, to amend requirements to perform sidewalk construction work within the public right of way. And third, councilmember Gordon gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance related to the small and underutilized business enterprise program, updating administrative procedures and amending the sunset date of the program. Are there any questions on any of those notices? Seeing none, those notices are given, and no further action is required on those today. The next item on our agenda is the introduction and referral calendar. We have one item this morning that is a motion by myself pursuant to previous notice to introduce, give first reading and referral, the subject matter of an ordinance related to the Housing Maintenance Code to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee to amend licensing standards to include compliance with inclusionary housing requirements. I'll just note that this was a recommendation from staff to bring this along concurrently with the already introduced item that will go through the zoning and planning committee. Are there any questions or discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the ordinance is referred to the committee in the next cycle. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have two items today. First is the honorary resolution recognizing Spina Bifida Awareness Day that we had presented earlier. The second is the honorary resolution declaring 10 days free from violence. Are there any comments from councilmembers on those resolutions? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and both of those resolutions are adopted. The next item is our order of unfinished business. There is one item held over from the last council meeting that has requested rezoning submitted by Yellow Tea Corporation for the property located at 2323 Jackson Street Northeast, and I will recognize Councilmember Reich, the Councilmember from that ward, oh yeah, hi, for that item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have now an amended plan development review document that includes the water management efforts and best management practices that make a very tight site, not only viable for density, but also water management to a higher degree than what would normally be expected by the Minnesota Building Code, but more consistent with our views as a city. And that has been ratified, and there's a further commitment to do water storage on the roof as a second best management practice, again, to do water management on a very tight site that seeks greater density from our modifications to zoning. So I think it was a good trade-off and a good conversation, a time well spent, and I appreciate Chair Schrader indulging that process.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich has moved to approve the rezoning application for, on this site. Are there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that is approved. Next, we have announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers today? Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. This would have been our last council meeting prior to this event, but we do have another council meeting coming up next week, an adjourned council meeting.
The city of Minneapolis is focusing on health and wellness this year. And so the Equity Summit is on Thursday, October 4th, at Hennepin Theater Trust, 900 Hennepin Avenue. We have an amazing keynote speaker this year who happens to be a Minnesota native. His name is Kai Allens, who was, in 2010, became the first openly transgender college athlete in a NCAA Division One sports team. So I'm really happy that the city of Minneapolis and, in collaboration with the Minneapolis Park Board, are hosting this event, and it's free and open to the public.
Councilmember Gordon, thank you.
Thank you very much. This relates to one of the resolutions that we passed declaring September 21 to 30 as the 10 days free from violence. This is something that's being put together by a group called Twin Cities Nonviolent. It's coordinating these 10 days violence-free with a series of more than 60 events across the Twin Cities. So settle down, and I'll list each and every one of them with all the details. Just kidding. But there's more than 40 Twin Cities-based individuals and organizations who are participating in this. It's designed to increase awareness of best practices for violence prevention in the Twin Cities. And the big kickoff event will be occurring tomorrow, September 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. at Bide Makaska, and there'll be a gathering called Nations for Peace, Unity, and Healing, and everybody's welcome to go to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any further announcements? I did want to note that one of the neighborhood organizations in my ward, previously known as Carag, the Calhoun Area Residence Action Group, voted this past week to change their name, to remove Calhoun from their name, and they have chosen to become South Uptown. But they did that in response to the actions related to renaming Bide Makaska and to better honor our history, and it's a very thoughtful process that they used, and I really applaud their leadership. Anything else?
Open Streets.